To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone to our special meeting, I guess you could say, of August 28th. Please note, the council's in attendance, except for Mr. Hagan. He indicated he would be a little late, perhaps 30, 45 minutes. He didn't know, so. Okay, items from council.
I have one item.
Yes, sir.
I'd received a couple of phone calls about the light that we installed on Mockingbird by the Victoria East High School. Some citizens were concerned about it creating more problems than it solved. And I know that you are monitoring it, Mr. Short. If you wanted to just discuss what y'all are doing to make sure the traffic flow is worked out.
I can tell you, yes, the light went operational prior, just the Friday prior to school starting. We have been out there every morning and evening watching traffic and seeing. The bulk of the problem that we've seen out there is a congestion problem that it's just too many cars trying to get at one place at one time. And the traffic signal is not going to fix the congestion problem.
The single entrance?
We're monitoring it, and, I mean, the light, the light is working. It's operative. It's working as it should, but we're continuing to watch it. If we can make some adjustments, we will, but the congestion problem won't be solved by the traffic signal.
I actually did receive a compliment on it, so it's not all bad. But it's only been on for six days. I think it's a little early, and people, I would encourage people to be patient and get used to it, so.
You've got a lot of people trying to leave one particular building at one time, and it's the evening. It's my understanding that congestion is, is the problem, is the afternoon when their school's letting out, so.
I think it's worse in the afternoon. It is also in the morning a lot of times.
The issue of one entrance is still there. That won't go away with the light. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Short.
Anyone else have? Just a couple of quick comments I have. I noticed with the dry weather, and don't get up, Mr. Short, but the expansion joints where the concrete roads meet, like specifically Sam Houston and some of those areas, that's a considerable bump, you know? And there's a number of them around town. They're pretty bad, so I guess there's really nothing to do but revisit those and level them. And then when they become a dip, as the concrete moves a little more, you have to fill it in some more. But, yeah, they're pretty bad. So if staff, maybe the city manager could take a look at that, put it on your list of to-do. And, real quick also, I hesitate to bring up our favorite subject of hot funds, but it occurred to me after all our deliberation at our last meeting about hot funds, we didn't really have feedback from the committee other than their recommendation. I started to think about it. You know, they go through a considerable amount of information to come to their conclusion, more than what we look at by choice. In my case, I don't really want to go through hundreds of pages of applications. So I thought what we would do is next year, we can have a summary, very simple, some objective, some subjective information, just a quick summary of how they arrived at their conclusion for each entity. And we might have some specific numbers that we can compare across. I think that would be helpful for us. It just, that's the one piece, you know, missing. And also for the public, so they can see what, why the committee came up, you know, just a little information. And so we'll work on that next year, perhaps, get an early start on it.
We're always looking to improve the process.
Right, and I think the process has improved dramatically over the last five or six years.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Gush. And we had a conversation with a former councilman the other day about that, and he made some comments about how much better it is, so. And Tom, you remember, you know who I'm talking about, so. Okay, that's, those are the only two things I had. Nothing else from council? If not, we go into, go ahead and open Citizens Communications. I see one citizen here. If anyone wants to come speak about anything at all, seeing none, we'll close Citizens Communications and go straight into, well, before we do that, we did leave off a couple of items at our last agenda, and I thought what we would do is go into those first here. They are, Cheryl's gonna go through the health fund, and then LaRue will cover the CVB. I don't care which order.
Sure. I'll let LaRue go first.
If council doesn't mind, let's get those two presentations done, because they're related to the budget, which we will vote on in a little bit.
That's correct.
Okay, let's go ahead and do that.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. For the benefit of the viewing public, I always start my presentations with you by covering our mission statement and our funding source and all of the regulations that go with it. I know that you're very familiar with what we do and how we're funded, but the primary mission of the, our Convention and Visitor Bureau, or all of them really, is to increase occupancy at local hotels and bed and breakfasts by marketing the city as an overnight travel destination. There are specific rules, ooh, use the clicker here, rules about how the money is used, and there is a minimum, there is a statute that requires a minimum of 14.28 percent of the total hot collections that must be spent on advertising promotions, and we fulfill that obligation for the city. I would like to point out that hot collections rebounded the third quarter of this fiscal year. Local accommodations have already generated $1.563 million this fiscal year, and I expect the last quarter to be equally robust. And I also, at this point, want to point out some things that are coming, just briefly, a couple of things or a few things that are coming our way in the horizon, that I believe will have a significant impact on Victoria as a travel destination. First of all, Victoria College's emerging technology complex, which includes a 20,000-square-foot conference center, which will be coming online next summer. And for the first time, we really will have enough space. We're starting to pursue the small meetings market, but we'll be there. Secondly, in the area of agritourism, Jim and Karen Henry's Texas Olive Ranch, which is in development out by Telfner. Within a couple of years, there'll be, I believe, 300,000 or 400,000 olive trees out there producing, and they'll be providing tours of that facility. They'll have a retail center. That's going to be an important component that we can wrap into heritage tourism, tourism itineraries. The other thing that we were so excited to learn about this week was the decision to commit the 18,000-acre Powderhorn Ranch, not far from here, to be a state park. In a couple of years, we will have thousands and thousands of nature tourism enthusiasts flocking to this area, and we are in a prime location to benefit from that. We have the amenities and the accommodations, so. And the reason I bring this to your attention, because I think we need to think big picture when we think about Victoria and what we have to do to be a travel destination, and really what resources are available to us. In May, I gave you an in-depth report on our marketing and advertising. Tonight, I'd like to focus primarily on visitor information services. But the next page, oh, I've got to keep, I've got to turn the page here, is a look, I broke out our budget a little bit different this year than in past years, and I included everything. And so the number at the top for this fiscal year, $860,000, includes Boot Fest, includes our special projects. The budget we're requesting for the next fiscal year is somewhat bigger, $939,000. Simply request for a special project that I'd like to bring to your attention. But you'll also notice that we're decreasing the amount of money we're requesting for administrative costs and decreasing the amount of money that we're asking for special projects. Relating to our advertising plan, I think there was a question about that, what our plans are for next year, and I have some slides coming up here talking about metrics and, and success of program. If you'll remember from my presentation in May, we did move some money this year, more money into online video, more money into television, more money into cinema advertising, and saw great success with it. And so my recommendation for the next year is to put more money into it and expand the season. We did that March through May, saw some, it was very effective, and what I proposed for this next year, to start that campaign, a similar type campaign, in February and possibly run it into early June, it'll, you know, so that would be good. Also, we have two new video spots in production, one on kayaking, another spot on Old Victoria. A recent article, we, you know, reading a lot of travel industry trends or just information trends, marketing trends, declared that video is now the top of the purchasing funnel. We've become so digitally oriented, so, and we're getting a good response through that. So that's the direction that I will recommend that we go, is to continue to moving more towards digital and all of its, the ways we can get it out to the public. A few months ago, I was asked to review our visitor information services and to identify travel industry trends, and how are we engaging travelers once they're here? Or even how we're engaging them before they get here in terms of taking care of their information needs. I think the key to the future that I identified was the importance of mobility and flexibility. And so I have an idea to bring to you tonight that's rather innovative. It's on the cutting edge for Convention and Visitor Bureau. We're requesting funds to purchase a custom mobile visitor information center. And to start with this briefly, I promise this won't be too long, but in my research, I started, I went back to the original state statute that first allowed cities to collect hotel occupancy tax in 1971. This, the copy that you're seeing up there is, you know, done in an old typewriter. I got this from the Texas Hotel Lodging Association. It was a very simple, short law at that time, and Tom is grinning because he knows how long it is today. It was very simple, and so really, just kind of as an afterthought, they said that cities could use the money for the operation of information booths staffed by qualified personnel, note, not just anybody, but qualified personnel, to assist out-of-town guests in locating places of interest in the city. What's changed in the last 43 years? Everything. Harvest gold and avocado green may make a comeback, but I promise you, communication has changed forever. Especially, technology has given us an insatiable appetite for instant global information 24/7, for shopping, for information, for everything. And here are some trends I bring to your attention. You know, remember the old 80/20 rule? It seems to now be replaced by the 90/10 rule. I hadn't, I don't have time to figure that out, but I'm, I'm watching it. So, American adults, 90% have cell phones, 58% have smartphones. I suspect, I can't find the stats to prove that, I suspect that people that travel more often and travel, travel longer distances have smartphones. This is a stat from 2009. 90% of Americans are never more than three feet from their cellphone 24 hours a day. I suspect now that's like 99.9% of people are never three feet, more than three feet away from their cellphone. Here's some interesting stats from TripAdvisor, and thank you, Dr. Young, for pointing us in the direction and having more of a presence there. We do now have a content page. We can't control comments, but we can, we do have a presence. We can influence what people see about Victoria, and we're doing some banner advertising as well. But this is a fairly new TripAdvisor survey, and I grant it, it's a little skewed because the people who are on TripAdvisor are techies. But this is really interesting, that 90% of people use their, their phones when they're gone, and what they're, or when they're traveling, what they're using them for. 90, or 73% are using their phones to get around destinations. 62% restaurants, 52% looking for activities. And the other, the two bottom ones are very great interests. So you have 50% of people sharing their travels in social media while they're there, and that can be a mixed blessing. So we have, if we're providing this great experience, we've got people out there on their trip, taking pictures, doing selfies, uploading this information, sharing it with their friends and family. And there's no surprise that only 27% of people search for hotels, because most people make that arrangement before they're on the road. Oops, I did the wrong thing. Oh, James, what did I do? Oops, sorry. I'd like to quickly review our current visitor information services. We do operate two visitor information centers. Our downtown center is the 700 Main Center. It is open Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, and that's where we see most of our visitors. We do have, are still our little fledgling, fledgling visitor center on US 59 South, that rest area. And I have to acknowledge Robert Serrata, who is our loyal, loyal volunteer, who goes out there almost every Friday morning. Bridgette joins him out there. He says he does it because he loves coffee and popcorn, but he is a wonderful, wonderful ambassador for us. We are looking for volunteers, and I think because of the distance out there, we are struggling with that, but we're continuing to. The thing, important thing too, is it doesn't cost us anything to be out there. We have very minimal investment of resources that we could easily fall back into our main visitor center if someday we decide no longer to go out there. But they have some wonderful contacts, you know, some weeks more people than others, but so far, we're sticking with it. So I want to provide some metrics. Of course, it's important that everything we do when we're in marketing, we're always measuring constantly, and one of the things we measure are how many people come to our visitor center at the main center. And so in 2012, we had 922 people, of which 533 were tourists. Last year, the total number of people declined slightly, and actually, the number of residents increased. I think the word's getting around town that we have got a lot of great brochures and stuff like that. And we see a lot of new residents. Gosh, we're seeing a lot of new people in Victoria, and they're coming in and coming by and stuff. Goodness, there's a lot of people. And emails from people and calls from people, lots of interest in people relocating here, and we get to see them. So another way we provide services and information services is we send in, send out visitor guides in response to the inquiries we get from website, from telephone, and from the magazine ads, the ads that we, that we run. And there are, third way we provide services is actually what I call our virtual visitor center, which is our website, which we're seeing the most activity. This is an interesting stat, I thought, from the Adventure Travel Trade Association. 60, I'm not sure, you know, how to interpret that. 69% of people use the web to plan and book weekend vacation time during work hours.
Not our employees.
No, no, no. But it's like, that's, huh, that's, that's a very telling stat. So looking at the website, and this kind of tells you about the ad campaign this spring, you know, with things, we've been doing well, and we've been seeing some, every year, we've been seeing some gains in terms of, of visitation to the website. But when we changed it up this spring and went to more online, more television, more cinema, and I think I saw you in May where I was reporting those March and April numbers, and then in May, it jumped even higher, and I couldn't believe it, and I kept checking those numbers, it's like, wow, that is incredible. But the bottom line here is, we're engaging thousands and thousands of people every year in a conversation about Victoria, more than ever before. I mean, our stats really only go back three years. We don't have a lot of history before that. But that in itself is, I think, a pretty amazing thing. So how does it compare between the three and year by year? So clearly, this year, through July 31st, still have one quarter to report. It looks like, you know, we, well, we did. We beat the last two years already in the visitor center. And so we are seeing more people in Victoria, we're seeing lots of tourists, lots of people coming in to take that driving tour. They've seen our ads. Also, I want to note, I was really so pleased when I heard Amanda Rocha from the zoo at the last meeting talk about that they've seen an increase of out-of-town visitors at the zoo. They do a tremendous job. They're an amazing partner for us. They do a lot of stuff out on the road, but I'd like to think that some of the advertising we've done this year, especially that cute Stevie, Go Stevie at the Zoo spot that was airing in San Antonio and Houston and other places, actually all over the state, has made a difference. I really think it has. Looks like we're going to beat the last two years in terms of visitor guides mailed as well, but you just can't beat the, the website thing. That's where all the, most of the activity is, all the action is. Like all of us, like I said, we are just not patient enough to get information almost any other way than on the internet. But another trend that we're seeing in the travel industry is meeting travelers where they are, and this is not terribly new, but it's still out there. I mean, it's a part, a phrase that we're hearing and saying is how important it is to meet travelers where they are. And so we have our, our visitor guides out there, and now that we have Bridgette on staff, we're, we're doing a much better job of getting our brochures out to more locations. We actually have shops contacting us, I think the bike shop, I can't remember where that contact came through, and said, gosh, we'd like to have your brochures here. We have people that are coming in biking and asking about town, and so we're getting them out to more and more locations, and we're, we're doing a better job of keeping them stocked. Consequently, just last month, we had to print another 20,000 visitor guides, and this week, we're printing another 7,500 Old Victoria Driving Tour Guides, because we're getting them out, there are people that are picking them up. We're getting them out to visitor centers over the state and to the state travel centers. So here we go with this new, bold idea. But is it really so new? Is it really so bold? Where I grew up, there were bookmobiles. You know, they took the books to the rural areas. There are mobile clinics, there are mobile blood bank centers. Goodness, food trucks have taken eating as a form of entertainment to a whole new level. So really, the question is, why haven't, why are CVBs doing it, is really what's taken us so long to, to get with it? And here's an example, the only other one I know in Texas right now is Austin. And another interesting part about this, I'll share a couple of different cities that are doing this, but I can tell you, it's, it's really something fairly new. It's something that thought leaders in the industry are embracing. There's a lot of other cities interested in it, looking at it, circling the, circling the wagon, so to speak. But Austin, because they're Austin, they do everything unique, really, and, and every city who's doing this is customizing it to meet their needs. Austin takes this on the road and they use it as a marketing tool. They're, you know, they go to, they go to Nashville and set up and claim they're the music capital of the world. Well, that's, that's bold, you know? You know, and it's really tricked out on the inside, and they, because they, I've seen pictures of the setup at shows and stuff like that, where, you know, and so people can go in and listen to Austin music and stuff like that. So that's pretty cool. The Tulsa, Oklahoma Convention and Visitor Bureau just got theirs in May, and I had some communication with their staff. They're so excited, they've been working on it for a year. And they're primarily going to use it to take it out to big events in the Tulsa area, but we'll take it on the road as needed. Their cost for that, just the mobile, the, just the center part of it, was about $33,000. And they're also saying that they're getting lots of contacts from other CVBs and stuff. So primarily, it looks like they're going to use that simply in a servicing area, but that's the beauty of this kind of thing. It's a very flexible tool that can be used for servicing, but also can very easily become a marketing tool. So that's that. Even the state of Texas got on board with this. This is interesting. The state tourism office created this vehicle simply for a social media campaign, something hashtag, something, something Texas. I don't know, can't remember. But they took it to New York, Chicago, and Los Angeles, and so I thought that, well, that was, that's bold too. We won't do that. We're not going to go to New York if we get ours, I promise. But even, they're getting on, I mean, they're getting, and so they're on it. And this is the one I first discovered that really piqued my interest. And believe me, when I went to research our, this, as I was directed to, and I said, go out in the world and research, what are other people doing? The last thing I expected really was to find this, and I was like, I was pretty skeptical. But when I found this, I thought, and there's a video that I'm going to show you in a minute, that is so cool, you know, in terms of the, the concept and the size and stuff like that. So the cost, this is Arlington, Virginia. They launched this in October of 2010, and the cost of this unit with the vehicle is about $70,000, but it is electric-powered vehicle. And I've checked back with them, they're happy with it. Now they're trying to raise money to get a gas-powered vehicle, because they want to take it out on the road. So if you'll indulge me, I'll let James show a video about this particular one.
We turn our attention to a funny-looking vehicle that's been seen around the county lately. It's called the Mobile Tourism Vehicle, and it's the latest innovation from Arlington's Economic Development. So let's go to Emily Cassell in Crystal City to tell us all about it.
Hi, I'm Emily Cassell of the Arlington Convention and Visitor Service, part of Arlington Economic Development. Today, I'd like to introduce you to Arlington's latest effort to bring tourism into the 21st century. So this is Arlington's new mobile visitor center, and this is Courtney Cacation, our visitor services counselor.
Hello.
Mobile is really the key word here. In old visitor centers, people used to have to walk to a storefront location and look around at lots of maps and brochures, and then take them away to go visit the neighborhoods where they wanted to see attractions. But now it's different. This is a much more flexible solution that's really part of our strategy to bring visitor services right into the neighborhoods where our hotels are. So these solutions actually make it more mobile and more convenient for customers.
That's right. It started here in Crystal City with the rolling concierges, as people in the summertime with the red shirts on the sidewalks. And then it moved to Roslyn with the touchscreen kiosk, where you can find out information on local attractions, restaurants, and shopping.
The kiosk and the rolling concierges were a great test for us, and we did that strategically in Roslyn and Crystal City in order to serve up to 80% of Arlington's hotel guests. So the mobile visitor center actually combines those two solutions and enables us to spread visitor services to major metro stops in our guest neighborhoods throughout the county. True to Arlington's reputation as a thought leader, this mobile visitor center is one of the first of its kind in the country, and it actually saves the county money. The one-time cost of this mobile visitor center was less than the annual cost to operate a storefront location. And in addition, it's electric, which makes it true to the county's vision of environmental sustainability.
It's actually considered pretty risky, because what we were doing was taking the old model of visitor services and turning it on its head. Rather than waiting for people to come to us in a storefront visitor center, we're going out to them. We're at six different metro stops in Arlington, five days a week, so that people can get information on local attractions, shopping, and restaurants. We'll also be around for special events such as the Marine Corps Marathon. The idea is to get out into the neighborhoods so that we're accessible to tourists and guests of all of our residents. We're hoping that guests to Arlington will have a great time because of these new initiatives, and they'll come back to Arlington County again and again.
Well, thanks, Courtney, for coming out here today, and it looks like you have a guest.
Hi, may I help you?
Now more than ever, smart communities are looking for better ways to provide services, and this mobile visitor center is a perfect example of something that's decentralized, convenient, flexible, and mobile. So we look forward to seeing you soon in an Arlington neighborhood.
If you have guests come.
So clearly, what I'm suggesting is a slightly different model, but, and we have no intention of closing our visitor center, and we have no intention of getting an electric vehicle, I want to emphasize that. But, you know, so it seems right now, and the thing too, is it's flexible, and it's really in terms of how we'll use this, is we're only limited by our imagination. I've come up with fairly, a short list of ideas. We didn't want to be presumptuous about that it would be funded or not, but I did want to come to with some realistic ways we could use it. But I want to emphasize, because it's going to be wrapped in advertising, that whether we're in it or not, it's going to be working 24/7. If it's parked at our parking lot, if it's parked out at the Welcome Center at 59 when we're out there, when we're driving it around town, when we're driving it out of town, it will be working for us. But so, you know, at festivals, you know, spring, so we could be in the art car parade and then go to the Nave Center and provide services. We could be at location in the historic neighborhood during the Historic Homes Tour. Rather than expecting visitors who come in for it to try to find a visitor center, we'll be there. And in terms of staffing, yeah, this is going to create more work for the CVB. Bring it on. And, and I think we'll have better luck with visit, I mean, with volunteers in town. I think, I think our travel partners will be excited to, to work with it. So, you know, if there's a sporting tournament that comes in, you know, at the, at the youth sports complex, we'll be there, and probably not for the whole time, but for part of it. There's big festivals at the park, we can be there for a few hours, you know? We can be there wherever we need to be. We can take it out to the hotels. Sometimes we have a hard time getting them enthusiastic and getting them trained about what to do here, getting them enthusiastic. But we could, sometimes we go out and visit with them, we're doing another hotel visit tomorrow and stuff like that, and sometimes we bum a cup of coffee, but maybe we could come by with our mobile visitor center and some muffins and coffee and invite them to come hang out with us and, you know, that kind of thing. There's so many different ways. We've also talked about out-of-town possibilities. One is there's a, there's a food truck festival in Houston that we contacted about this, and they said, come on up. I mean, it would involve a sponsorship and stuff like that. Yeah, maybe we could be there with a pop-up tent. We'd be a lot more effective being there in a vehicle like this. We're a sponsor every year of the Texas Water Safari, which starts in San Marcos. They always invite us to come up and have a presence there. It's, it's an outdoor event, you know? It's hard to take these things inside, but it's an outdoor event. Something wrapped with red and a big Explore Victoria, you know it's going to get some attention. We, we believe we can have it in regional parades. There's just a lot of different ways that I think that we can use the mobile visitor center. Does anybody have any questions?
What's the life?
The life of it? That's a good question. Well, the vehicle, first we have to choose a vehicle, and I did talk to a manufacturer in Ohio. And I did talk to a manufacturer in Ohio who built the one for Arlington, Virginia. And he figures, you know, and we have to choose the vehicle base, and it would be about $30,000. So then, they'd custom build the rest of it and bolt it on, so that if something happened to the vehicle, you could unbolt the unit and replace, you know, replace the vehicle, should that happen. But the other one, the same thing. So I'm, you know, I don't know, I would be, I guess the question is, what's the shelf life on a food truck? I don't know. I imagine it depends on how we take care of it. We do, of the funding that we're requesting from you, $5,000 a year, we estimate on maintenance, insurance, and fuel costs, you know? And I know we'll want to change up the wrap, which will probably cost us about $3,000, but that's the way advertising is, you know? After a year or something, we'll want to change that up. The electronics, in terms of the cost itself, he figures the base cost of it will be about $30,000. The unit itself depends on how much functionality we want to build into it, how big we want it. We would want it at least big enough to have two people in it, but we don't want such a big vehicle, the staff will be intimidated, like me, intimidated driving it, you know? And we like the idea of having a self-driven vehicle rather than something pulled by another vehicle. I've checked with Chief Craig--
Is he here?
Yes. And he said, "We're good to go about parking it here." Like, for instance, like, would we be able to park something like this here? Would it be safe? Would they allow it? As long as we abide by parking rules, and we open it up to the sidewalk side of it, creates no hazard or anything like that. So that's--
So what did we budget for roughly 130?
We asked for $120,000, but that's a real high end of it, you know? Really, the manufacturer estimated 90 to 120,000. And so it comes down to, if we're going to do this, let's do it right. But let's not spend a penny more than we have to. You know me. We're not, we won't spend a penny more than we have to.
I think it's a great idea.
Thanks.
And I think you've lined out and mentioned things very--
Thank you.
You sold it very well--
Yeah.
And mentioned some very positives.
Yeah.
So I like it a lot.
Thanks. I mean, and if you guys want to think about it, I understand that, too. You know, it's--
Well, and this is the difference in your budget this year, from it being a flat budget to the--
Right.
Pretty much, it's, this is the increase in your budget as for the--
Right. Actually, the original budget was even lower. I think we reduced our budget request this year because we were able to streamline some of our administrative costs. So before then, it kind of, we decided, "Let's ask for this," and that's jumped it up. So without this, I think my budget, our budget, would actually be a little bit less this year.
Mr. Alvarez--
Yeah, just one more. How will you measure its effectiveness? What do you propose are the goals and objectives or performance measurements?
Mm-hmm.
Miles, places used, number of people that come to it?
That's a great question. You're, I'm glad you ask it, because you're right, if we get to do this, we'll need to set up those metrics ahead of time. But I think it's all of the things you mentioned. How many times do we use it? Where do we use it? How many brochures did we hand out? How many hours were we out, you know, staffing it? Where we were staffing? Another thing to look, if you really, I think I would be really curious to test different locations, even within the city. You know, there's a new La Quinta going up on the Bloomington Highway. I'd love to get into their parking lot if they'll let us for a while, and just see if, you know, if some people that come off to that rest area, you know, or to the gas station there would come over and, you know? I'm curious about that. If we really could influence people coming off of 59, if they saw us, would they come and visit? Could we grab them for the night, you know? Or try different spots around town and stuff like that? And I can see Joel, knowing Joel, because he's our, he's our great social media. I can see us playing games with this in town or regionally, you know? It's like, "Where's the Explore Victoria and Mobile Visitor Centers today?" or something, you know? You know, so, but there's a lot of, exactly. How utilized is it? How many different places? It just seems like a really strong way to get our message out, and the very fact that it's both servicing and marketing.
And I would like to, that's a good question. I'll follow up on it. I don't want, I'm not trying to answer it necessarily, but--
Mm-hmm.
Everything you do is relative. In other words, for example, you have a slide that shows there's increase in web traffic.
Right.
You would assume that would go up further. Hotel motel collections would be a measure of, you know? And when we first started investing this level of money in the CBB, because we had not for two decades, literally--
Mm-hmm.
A lot of people expect results immediately, but it's a cumulative effect. It takes years.
It does.
Some of the things we do now, I still think, three, four, five years down the road, we may start to see that cumulative effect. And I'm just saying, I'm just speaking my mind here, you know? You see it in little ways all around the community eventually. Maybe not next month or next year, but--
Right.
It's a cumulative thing.
Right.
But I really like the idea of the mobile. I think it's a good compromise, and it's forward-thinking, and--
Thank you.
Counsel, y'all have thoughts?
My thoughts? I'm still skeptical about it.
Go ahead. Me, too. No.
The places that are mentioned where they have them--
Mm-hmm.
All have major attractions. Arlington, Virginia is a major destination for people that are going to go see Washington, DC. There's tons of business that goes on. There's just a lot of activity. I'm looking at the numbers we're presenting for the people that do walk into the visitor center on 700 Main.
Mm-hmm.
And I have a hard time correlating that with $120,000 being spent on a mobile visitor center. And I'm still wondering, should we be saving that money to create a better attraction?
Right, right. Understandable.
I'm having a tough time balancing that part out with the Mobile Visitor Center.
I'm on board with you about more tourism product development. It's how to get there. How do we do that and do it legally with the funds, you know? Because, you know, everybody says, "Well, let's build a water park, let's." It's like, whoa, let's come back to the law. What does the law say we can do with the money? How long do we have to save the money before we can do something? Or should we invest and take advantage of these regional things that are happening, like Potterhorn State Park and the Texas Olive Ranch? But, you know, that's a good question. I suspect I could be wrong, but I bet we will service tons more people if we get out of our building and get to events and get excited and interact with people than we are in a building. Again, the buildings, you know, it's mobile. It's all about mobile. It's about being mobile with a, I don't know, I just got, that's my gut feeling. We got to be more mobile. We've got to be more flexible. We've got to be more innovative. But in, and what, you know, what's really encouraging is there is a lot of discussion in the community now, even sitting through last city council meeting and all of the discussion about the other outside agencies and the funding they get and who should get it. And there's a lot of chatter about tourism, probably more than ever. Some of it's interesting, to say the very least, but nevertheless, there's a lot of people, there's a lot of discussion, there's a lot happening, you know? There's a lot of conversation. And this matches, even UH V, I was thinking about the colleges. We could be over there, you know, just really welcoming people. We're working more with the student services people over there and stuff. All those kids have parents, you know, and they talk. Or we could be out at the Generals Games and, you know, it's one of those, "Service to sell again," you know? Repeat business. Show people that you care they're here, be excited for them, invite them back. Yeah. So we think it could be a sales tool for us, and we could have, you know, a couple days a week, we might have to just go sit on the beach with it, though.
Yeah. It seems to be, kind of fit the piece of puzzle we're missing.
Yeah.
You're hitting every area, and there's some development in the sports, in the Boot Fest, and all the advertising, but it's that piece we're seem to be missing.
Right.
Of course, we've had the discussion of a visitor center come and go here quite a bit.
Right, right.
This is almost like a compromise, much less cost. I would assume, there was a question about the life of it. Surely, we can get eight to 10 years out of it, so if you kind of--
I would think so.
I don't know, you know? But if you look at it across that, the cost goes down considerably.
Depends on the technology you put into it.
Yeah. And you can-- The chassis ought to be, and I am not a vehicle person, Darrell, but that chassis ought to last a long time, because you're not going to be putting a high mileage on it, and you're not going to drive it like we do ambulances.
Right. It's, if they're using it every day, and most of the time, it's regional, they're not going to put that many miles on it. You know, it would take them a while to get to that 100,000 miles where we'd want to trade it in. And if they start driving across the state, you know, it may be a different story.
And we want to, too, sometime, go to Austin with it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Put a sign on it, "Victoria, where we're not weird."
Ooh, that's a great idea.
Go to Austin, might get some entry.
Anthony, Anthony Panoni has an event during South by Southwest that I haven't approached him about partnering with, but that might be a possibility where we'd have a presence. It would be quite a juxtaposition, but still--
Houston Rodeo, I think I heard mentioned. Dr. Young mentioned have it up there for that. And so, what, so the next step is later on in the budget year, you guys will look at options and maybe bring something back, and then we can decide at that point.
First, y'all have got to approve the budget, and if this stays in her budget--
Yeah.
And so that, yeah, yeah. So then, if y'all approve the dollar, a budget dollar amount, then yes, we will, we will refine--
Yeah, then we have to go to the design stage and stuff. And there's some remarkable things. I'll just, one more example, and I'll stop. But this company in Ohio, and I'm not pushing them, but they did Arlington. So they did a mobile vehicle for the Department of Agriculture in Ohio that actually transformed into a working demonstration kitchen. So the whole thing unfolded, so they could go to state fair, county fairs, and just open it up and actually demonstrate, and then have big TV monitors, you know? Again, we are only limited by our imagination, but our budget, too. And again, you know, even with the electronics, things, I mean, I, you know, again, everything's mobile-changing. You know, something will have to change. We're going to, we're going to change the cover, we're going to, you know, technology. We don't know what's on the pike. We want to have Wi-Fi. We want to have Wi-Fi in it. Yeah. So I bet we can use it more of the year than Arlington, Virginia can.
Okay. Well, good comment.
Do you want to finish your presentation on your, the hotel updates?
I was just going to go to the hotels, only if you wanted me to. I mean, it's there, I mean, it's there, it's just kind of-- I know, I would be happy to. Courtyard Marriott's still in the process of opening. They're telling us now September 2nd, and that La Quinta is coming on strong down there. But that's, again, just kind of, I just wanted to really, and the other thing, too, is they're doing well. The hotels are doing well. We're seeing it in the collections. This is, this is an example, and I'm, this is, I did a sales lead-out for a girls' softball tournament. Only seven of the 26 hotels responded to it, but it was a nice selection of hotels. They gave a nice range of rates. The event planner is very pleased. And this is important, too, why we're getting this tournament. They've looked at Victoria before, before the hotel rates were too high. They've kind of checked us out. But here's the other thing, the weekend they're coming here, Formula One in Austin, which is soaking up and displacing hotel rooms as far away as San Antonio and Waco, to burn it to Bastrop. So when those things happen, they create opportunities for us. So, and then they're going to come here, we're going to treat them wonderfully. Colby and his staff is going to take care of them, and they're going to want to come back with more tournaments. So--
How many hotel rooms do you anticipate with that tournament? Hotel room nights?
Um, probably about 300 room nights. Depends, yeah. Last year, they held the tournament in Seguin, they had 55 teams. It was interesting, because she said, "Seguin only has a couple hotels," so most everybody stayed in San Antonio and commuted over. So, but this year, by bringing it down here, this first time they've had it this far south, they're hoping to draw teams up from the valley.
Which one, which tournament is it?
It is, it is the girls' fall fast pitch softball tournament. It's a state fall tournament for sixes, eights, and tens, or something like that, something like that. So it's, I don't remember the acronym of the, of the group, I'm sorry.
Well, it's okay.
IFA, BTD, or something like--
You said girls' fast pitch, it's the younger--
Younger girls, yeah.
Okay. Just curious.
Fast Pitch Association, BTD, Girls' South State Championship.
Okay. I bet the hoteliers really like that one. This is a lot of room nights.
This is one, and many more to come.
Right. Good, good.
I'll go two for Kobe. No, I'm teasing.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. One more presentation?
Yes. Thank you.
Can I ask Gilbert something?
Thank you.
Can I ask Gilbert something?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Sorry, Ms. Elise, go ahead.
Gilbert, the line item to cover that expense, is that the, the inner, inner fund charges?
Yep. It's a $5,900 capital replacement charges, $120,000.
On the hotel motel fund?
No, no.
CBB.
It's CBB.
Okay, within, inside that?
Yeah.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, yes, I was looking at the budget, so.
Very good.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. I'm glad to bring forward tonight our proposal on healthcare changes for the next plan year, 2015. The agenda is going to be a short one. We're going to review some of the changes we made for last fiscal year, as we've made plenty for Plan Year 14, and how that impacted our health fund. Proposal for fiscal year 14, 15, and then one quick chart to show sort of a summary of a cost analysis. One key message I want you to know is that we are recommending no changes to what we currently have. That means no plan design changes or no premium increases for employees and family members for Plan Year 2015. So just to recap, some of the changes we did make last year. We introduced a different plan design changes by adding a high deductible health plan with a health savings account attached to that. We still have our traditional PPO plan, but we also offered up our high deductible plan. Monthly premiums did increase. How much of an increase for employees depended on their participation in a health risk assessment profile. We also increased our co-pays for our PPO office visits, as well as the annual deductible for our traditional PPO plan. We did eliminate the basic dental plan, if you recall, and now have one premium dental plan, which includes the orthodontic services. And we focused on prevention and wellness with the introduction of the health risk assessment, and then education on our disease management program. We also implemented the healthcare reform mandates that came online, as well as looked at our over-65 retirees and transitioning those folks off to a private exchange. So a lot of changes. The impact of those changes resulted in about 18% of our employees, family members, enrolling in that high deductible plan for the first year. in that high deductible plan for the first year. We would have loved to seen this maybe 81%, but we were happy with the first year at 18%. The health risk assessment, we had 590 participants, that included employees, spouses, and retirees under the age of 65. Those services alerted those individuals to potential health risk factors that they needed to pay attention to. It also provided us with an aggregate report of data, not individual information, but an aggregate report of those 590 of what our top three avoidable diseases would be for our population. And those are highlighted up there, with number one being type 2 diabetes for our population. We also implemented the healthcare reform mandates, we brought in preventive care services, those are now covered at 100%, which is a big change for our plan, as well as annual benefit limits removed beginning in 2014. We also had where employees could opt out of the city's plan and purchase coverage elsewhere. If you recall, our plan before last year required the employees to enroll in one of our health plans, and that rule was dropped last year, so it gave them the affordability, or the, the opportunity, if you will, to go out and shop at other plans if they so wanted to. And then we successfully transitioned, yes sir?
How much has that occurred?
We did have some folks drop off of our plan, and might have either gotten on their spouses' plan, if that was more cost effective for them, or gone out there with regards to the exchange.
How many roughly?
I don't have a number.
Uh, number, last one I had was about 60, 61.
Out of 600?
Thank you, Gilbert. Retirees over 65 on private exchange, we successfully have transitioned 120 over 65 retirees and spouses to the private exchange utilizing our Health Plan 1. That was growing pains with regards to that, but we did get through it successfully.
Very good, I'm sorry to interrupt you again.
No, please.
And I, maybe I should know this, the preventive care covered at 100%, what is that? What's examples of that?
It follows the healthcare reform mandates, immunizations, well child visit, well women visits, colonoscopies are covered, as long as it's purely preventive. So you can actually access all the preventive screenings out there on the healthcare reform mandate website, and those are what's covered under our plan at 100%. So pretty much well child visits, well women, well men.
Okay.
Does that help you?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, great. Yeah. So for Plan Year 15, which impacts the fiscal year 14-15 medical plan, is, is the same for last year as what we are proposing. So we will continue to have a traditional plan. Right now, currently, we have 489 current covered lives under that traditional plan. The co-pay will remain 35 for in-network primary care physicians, and 50 for in-network specialists. Annual deductible, 1250 for employees, 3750 for family, and then expenses are covered 80% after that deductible. That's the plan that we have today, and we would recommend adopting that for next year as well. The high deductible health plan, we have about 89 current covered lives enrolled in that plan. That is the contributions to the health savings account via the payroll deductions. There is no co-pay, because the employee, family members cover that first dollar up to that annual deductible. Annual deductible for individuals are 2,500, families are 5,000, but then expenses are covered 100% after that. So the employees will remain paying the full cost of premiums for the dependent coverage, it is a voluntary enrollment, again, for next year. Medical coverage begins day one of employment, we'll maintain that. And then the monthly premium differences will may, depend on completion of a health risk assessment, however, we're not recommending that those folks that completed an HRA last year complete another one this year. However, anybody that's changing between a non-HRA plan and an HRA plan would be required to take it, and then anyone new to the plan would be required to take it, to get that lower premium structure. The dental plan will stay the same as well, we're recommending, again, we have one dental plan, which is the premium, 565 current covered lives in this plan, the city pays 80% of basic services, 50% for major. Preventive services are at 100% for two visits per calendar year. That annual deductible is 50 for employee, 150 for family. It does include the orthodontic services. Again, employees pay the full cost of premiums for dependent coverage, volunteer enrollment, and dental coverage begins day one of employment. We do have some areas of opportunity for next year, Plan Year. We have completed a communication gap assessment with our benefit consultants, as well as a wellness gap assessment, and we have found areas that we know we can improve upon with regards to educating our employees on becoming better healthcare consumers, shopping around for what they need to look at. It really becomes a consumer-based operation out there with regards to looking at services that physicians might offer, clinics, as well as even prescription costs, depending on which, which pharmacy you go to. So we want to enhance communication strategies around how to educate our folks to become that better healthcare consumer, even emphasizing using urgent care facilities in lieu of going to emergency room facilities. Under prevention and wellness, we want to emphasize those healthier behaviors that ultimately will hit and impact hopefully are those three top avoidable healthcare costs that we saw with our HR, type 2 diabetes being number one for us. We continue to educate folks on our case management and disease management program that we have. Again, it really ties back to communication around what's out there, what we, can we offer in way of prevention and wellness to our employees and family members. And then we also want to continue to look at relationships with our carriers, our network, our contract relationships that we have, third-party administrators, and look for opportunities there that might be available, that we can do behind the scenes that's gonna make our plan work efficient and effective ongoing. We want to continue to examine adjustments to premiums if we need to, based on how our self-funded health plan is doing. And then we want to analyze our individual stop loss, which we're in the process of doing that, as well as schedule to complete a compliance gap assessment with our benefit consultants, and so that's on the books to do as well before the end of this year. And to wrap the, the cost analysis up, you can see the employee medical claim cost, and this is just employee only, for fiscal year 13-14, 3.85 million. We have a slight decrease going into fiscal year 14-15 projected for employee only. This can change depending on how claims come in, as, as you probably well know, but we believe that the trend is moving in the right direction, slight decrease, which allows us to present this proposal to you and stay steady for next Plan Year with what we have currently. Any questions?
Cheryl, and your handout has all the current premiums and everything.
Yes ma'am, you have some backup slides there that I won't go into, but you've got, excuse me, you've got some information there with regards to the city's contribution, as well as the employees, and the total premium cost, which is what we have today, and then go into next fiscal year.
Okay, so one of the slides says no increase recommended for Plan Year 2015, and you mentioned in one of your earlier slides, I thought I heard you say something about there was increases.
No, sir, no, no premium increases at all.
Just talking about the year before.
The co-pay?
It's all the same.
Oh, 13-14.
Yeah, all the same.
Right, okay.
She just rewent over all of them.
Got you.
Yeah, I just was giving you a review, no changes. I'll go back to, let me go back to just, uh-
I was looking at something else.
No changes.
After last year, that is very welcome.
Yes, it is. That's why I want to emphasize that point right there, yes sir. No, 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 you're fine.
I was, I was reading something else when you showed that first slide there.
We did make quite a few changes last year, but I think, I think we're, we're moving in the right direction, so.
Heard of the private market, that is incredible.
Thank you.
And, and I would say this, and I want to thank all the employees for working through this and being understanding. I know it was hard last year, some of them didn't like it, I understand that, but I want to thank them and staff for communicating and doing the best we can with this, so, you know, make it easy. Counsel? Okay.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we can move into Section C, ordinances.
Item C1 is an ordinance amending Sections 20-82A1, 21-41A, and 21-82C4 of the Victoria City Code, addressing maximum number of residential driveways, rural residential setbacks, and final plat extensions, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for publication and codification, and declaring an effective date. This is a second and third reading.
Move we adopt C1.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, but I understand we also have a needed amendment?
Yes, Councilman Alvarez pointed out to me this afternoon that when we adopted this ordinance on first reading at the last meeting, there was an oversight in the ordinance, and if you, if you'd like to turn to that ordinance, on page one of two, it's the amendment to Section 21-41. You'll notice about a third of the way through that paragraph, we're changing one year to two years. That's the significant change in that paragraph of the ordinance. Later in the same paragraph, we make another reference to one year, and we didn't catch that. And so I need to entertain a motion to amend that Section 21-41, such that the final sentence of that paragraph reads, failed, failure to record the plat within two years of the date of the Planning Commission approval, shall void all approvals thereto unless an extension is granted by the Planning Commission.
Make a motion, make a motion to amend to include, to change that one to two in that sentence.
Second. Okay. Got a motion and a second, very good catch on reading that. Is there, everyone clear on that? Okay, let's, uh, let's vote on the amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we have a motion and a second to vote on it, C1 as amended. Is there any discussion?
Want to order, do you need a public hearing or not?
No, this is a second and third reading, so we do not need a public hearing.
Over here, that confuses me all the time.
I just said it right there with public hearings, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion on C1? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, C2.
C2 is an ordinance amending the 2013-2014 City of Victoria General Fund budget by transferring $1,271,936.97 to the construction fund for fiscal year 2014-15 capital improvement plan projects, and declaring an effective date. This is also a second and third reading.
Make a motion to adopt item C2.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on C2? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, passes.
Item C3 is an ordinance amending Sections 24-121A and B, and Section 24-122A and B of the Victoria City Code, relating to fees to establish revised water and sewer rates, repealing conflicting parts of existing ordinances, providing for enforcement, publication, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date. This is also a second and third reading.
Make a motion to approve item C3 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, okay. Now, the next two items are just simply public hearings.
That's correct.
As required. I can go ahead and just open, the first one is a public hearing with regard to the City of Victoria tax rate. Anyone would like to come forward and speak on that issue alone? Now we give the time. We will have two additional public hearings on this as well, at later dates. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on the tax rate. The next public hearing is required, is on the budget itself. If anyone would like to come forward and speak to the budget, this is the time, and seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on the budget itself, and move to C6.
C6 is an ordinance approving and adopting a budget for operating the municipal government of the City of Victoria for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2014, and ending on September 30th, 2015. Appropriating money for the various funds and purposes of such budget, including appropriations of money to pay interest and principal sinking fund requirements on all indebtedness, repealing all conflicting ordinances and appropriations, providing for severability, and declaring an effective date. This is a first reading, we do need a public hearing on a first reading of an ordinance, even though technically we've just had a public hearing on the budget, those are two separate items.
Hmm, okay, 'cause I, I wouldn't have done that if you would have said that, I didn't realize that.
The public hearing here is required by our local ordinances, not by the state law.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing on item C6, again, which is about the budget. And since I see no, anyone would like to speak about the budget, and we have someone, come forward, state your name and address.
Will Joseph, 401 Dunbar, Victoria, Texas, 77904. Dog park, is this gonna be on the budget, is this something that's considered for the foreseeable future?
Actually, I can tell you, the Parks Commission is working on something related to a dog park, and they will be, it's gonna originate there, and it'll, it'll come to this body during this year, I suppose. There will be some private fundraising efforts involved, so.
Okay.
Short answer is yes.
Yeah.
I don't know when.
There, there is no money in this current budget that we're gonna adopt for 15 for a dog park. But the mayor is correct, the Parks Commission is looking at, you know, bringing forth a recommendation on location, and then a fundraising mechanism to try to get the private sector to help us raise funds, and so they're taking that challenge on, to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I might suggest, if you don't mind, maybe coming to one of the Parks Commission meetings, our next one is September the 8th, and, you know, might voice your opinions about the dog park. Uh-huh.
That, that meeting is here?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'm not sure if we're doing the 8th. Are we doing it at 204? 204, at room 204 in 700 Main.
And you're welcome to, you know how to contact me, Will, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the public hearing on C6 is still open, and no one else wants to come forward, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we adopt C6.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on C6, which is just one, we'll have three opportunities to approve the budget and discuss or make changes, so, is there any comments or discussion on it now? We actually have a lot of options.
Yeah, I'd like to spend some time with LaRue, and talk a little bit more about the mobile visitor center.
Excellent, yeah. I would encourage everyone to ask questions to staff.
Yeah, absolutely. That's the only item that I'm, if you're about in the budget.
Okay.
But I know that doesn't affect tax rate, it's just the budget part.
Sure, no, it's all important. Now, we have two other readings, what are the dates? September 9th and 16th?
9th, 11th, and the 16th.
Yeah, we can talk about it, all those points.
And then we will do, for your September 2nd meeting, I went ahead and put another work session on there for the budget, in the event there was questions that council had about any items, so we can talk about it then.
Very good. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of C6, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda has nothing, no written address. We have a couple city manager reports.
Yes. Lynn's getting up.
Were you not looking?
You're up. No, go ahead, I was, I didn't, I was looking at my list, thank you.
Confiscated her notes.
Lynn's just gonna do a report on construction projects that have gone on throughout this past fiscal year, since we're almost to a close, to kind of give you an update. All the projects are listed in this handout, but he's gonna hit the high points on some of our big projects.
As the manager mentioned, this is all the projects that the city current, capital improvement projects that the city currently has under construction, and, and I'm certainly not gonna go over each of these here, but I encourage you to look through this. I do want to hit the high points, and if you'll look here on, on page one, you'll see some downtown projects. We have just recently completed Phase 3 projects 3 and 4A, and in November anticipate completing Phase 3 projects 5 and 6A, and we're fixing to start the Phase 3 projects 7, 8, and 9. So if you look on page 2, you'll see a map here of the entire downtown utility, all four phases. The purple in the middle is Phase 1, that is entirely complete. The green, just south of that, is Phase 2, that's entirely complete. Phase 3 is kind of this beige color that comes up the east side of the project, and then wraps around the, the northern edge of it. That is Phase 3. We are through with probably these, these, everything on this, south of Commercial Street is done, pretty much, and what's left is this across the northern end of it here, and we're fixing to start construction on that. Then, of course, that leaves Phase 4, which is on the west side, shown in light blue, and one of those, about half of that is Phase 1, Project 1, 2, and 3, which is currently under design. So, this was originally a 10-year project, we started construction in August 2008. We should finish, we're well into Phase 3, we should finish Phase 3 in mid-2016, and should finish Phase 4 by late 2017, so we will actually have about nine years of construction there toward this 10-year plan, but we've, it gets confusing sometime with all the phasing and projects, but it was a very large, complex project, we worked through with, you know, relatively few problems, so.
Mr. Short?
Yes?
The Phase 4, is that the part where we're waiting to complete so we can stripe the walkways there at Nazareth Academy?
Uh, no, the, Phase 4 is all on the west side.
Yeah, they're in two.
Probably Phase 3. Nazareth Academy is-
In Phase 2.
Actually in Phase 2. So we're not, we don't think we're waiting on a downtown project to get that done.
It's not right there at Convent and Glass?
Yeah.
I think it's in Phase 4.
Yeah, it is in Phase 4, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Does it overlap?
It does, it does, that's, you're right, you're exactly right. I didn't realize it has a little-
Have any walkways for, striped walkways until 2017?
If we, if we, if we wait until after we do utility replacements, it would be the end of 2017.
Do you know, we have stripe, to do that striping on a work order, I meant, any plans or anything?
We've got a striping project, this, we've already done a pre-construction on, I do not know if that's included in or not, I will look at, get into that. I do, I don't know if that's on that project or not, it could be added.
Be nice if there's some room there to add it, that's a long time on that school.
It is, we were doing the one-third of the city.
Right, right, and we're, we're just getting, fixing to get started on that, I mean, it's, it's been designed, it's been awarded, we've had a pre-construction, so, we're fixing to get started.
All right, thanks.
Couple of questions, you have a cost estimate on this, all these phases?
The original cost estimate was 42 million dollars, and to date, we're, we've been in budget. Yeah, so.
Now, the other question is, we're replacing infrastructure here that is approximately how old to how old?
Some of these pipes are approaching 100 years old, some of them are very old.
What's your estimated life?
Well, nowadays, we use 70 years for a pipe.
But these were way past.
But that's PVC, yes, and this was concrete and-
Now, just to indicate that it was a much appreciated project for the downtown.
A very much needed one.
It's good to hear, yeah, we, we ran cameras through some of those lines and showed that video here in this chamber, and some of them weren't lines, they were caves, parts of the pipe were gone, and I know when they did the area in front of my building, they apparently dug up wooden, octagon-shaped pipes.
Yeah, we found some.
And I, but they disintegrated one, 'cause I wanted to try to get a piece.
Right.
I don't know how old that was, but anyway, I don't, they was in use, they just found some.
Very old.
Anyway, that got off task then.
No, but that was the point, that this is a much deeper project, a long way, we're getting close to the end.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Another project you're probably interested is, is on, shown on page 3 at the bottom, Marilyn and Billy Drive Drainage Improvements. That project is, is moving along now. It has had some, a few setbacks, but the drainage is all in, the utilities, the water and sewer lines are in, the street has been seal-coated now. We're waiting on hot mix to come in and be installed. That should occur in early September, and then the contractor will be able to wrap that job up hopefully in September. We're envisioning in September.
Thank you.
That's a yay.
On page 5, the Odom Street Wastewater Treatment Plant, Off-Site Utilities. That contractor has been working on the sludge line that goes from the Odom Street plant to the regional plant. They're nearing completion of that line. They're now working on the domestic sanitary sewer that will serve the plant that's being installed from Hand Road up to the plant. The water line to serve the plant is in and complete now. The road to the plant off of Southwest Ben Jordan has been, the base works all in and installed, and it's been primed. It should get seal coat hopefully next week. And then, of course, the contractor will continue working on the very large 60-inch effluent line that will go near the Willow Street plant and discharge into the river, and then a force, a large force main that will come off of Bottom Street near Ben Jordan and take raw wastewater to the, to the plant. But that project's moving. We're trying to get them to the point where they're out of the way of the actual plant contractor. They will, who has already started mobilizing to the site. They moved a large crane there yesterday. They're getting, as I say, mobilized, and hopefully that work, their actual work will start mid-September on the plant itself. Beyond what's shown here, there's a few other projects that haven't started yet, it's the reason they're not on here, but they are 2014 projects. Water Tower 5, which was awarded here a week ago, that, that should, we anticipate that project starting in early November. We'd like to do that water tower work during the winter when water consumption's low, and we're hoping to complete it in April or May of next, of next year. North Heights Utilities, Phase 1, that, we'll bring that before you, September 2nd, next Tuesday, for award, and then that project will get kicked off. The traffic signal at Loop 463 and Business 59, the design of that signal is complete now. We're reviewing it. We hope to bid that in September or October, just right around the corner. The 77 Annexation Project, the design was complete, it's near complete now, but right before we're getting ready to bid here, a fiber optic company installed a line in the states right away that occupied the same place that we were planning on putting our water line. Now there is no room for the water line in the state right away, and so we are going back and trying now to acquire some additional easement to put that water line in up the east side of the highway. We have the funding for that. We believe in the project costs, but we've still got to acquire that. So that, that's slowing that project a little bit. And then the only other project's the Downtown Overlay, Phase 2. That design's complete, we're reviewing that right now. We probably won't bid that till November or December, because we don't want to start that project during the, during the winter. We want to start in the spring when, when weather warms back up, get those seal coats done when it's warm weather. And then beyond that, other projects that are in design, they're, they're 2015 projects, assuming, you know, once the budget's adopted, and of course, once the sales tax budget's adopted also, we will be putting together a letting schedule for those 2015 projects and bringing that before you in, in the form of a report. If you have questions on this, certainly ask me now, but, but also, if you have time to, to look at, if you have a question, just contact me, I'll be happy to try to answer you.
Which, where's Water Tower 5?
That's the one out by East High School on Mockingbird, between Stockbauer and Loop 463.
Okay, when we did the one here in the south side, it was windy, caused problems, and some of the stuff they hang was banging real loud all night against the water tower, keeping people awake, I understand, but that's a different designed tower, too. Maybe this contractor will have better luck, and we won't have any wind, but.
Well, that's why we try to get these done. You know, it's, we've got a narrow window there. It gets windy in the spring, and of course, it's, it's hot and water consumption's high during the summer, so.
Yeah.
You've got to fit in that window.
I'm sure they know what they're doing, and they'll do the best they can. I just.
Certainly.
Thought I'd throw that out there.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Can you give us a quick update on your public works facility?
Oh, yes, very good. And that project's in here also. The building is just very, very near completion. In fact, next week, the contractor plans to go ahead and turn the building over to us, so we can start beginning to, you know, get furniture set up and that sort of thing in there. The, they're still working on finishing the base work up for the yard. That should be done next week also. The fencing contractor is working now. We plan on shooting a seal coat on that yard in the next week or so, and then we will begin moving stuff from the world on north to there. Our plan is to occupy that facility, if possible, by October 1. We may not be fully, have everything moved, but we'll be occupying it then.
You'll have a CO for occupancy.
I'm sorry?
You'll have a CO.
We should have, yes, ma'am.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. The, mine won't take very long. I just want to get you up to date on where we stand with, with retail recruitment. You'll recall that we contracted, the city contracted with a retail coach out of Austin about last November to complete a retail market analysis and to prepare a retail economic development plan for the City of Victoria. They used license plate surveys and demographic analysis to define Victoria's retail trade area, which encompasses a region with a population of right at about 205,000 people. They also completed a retail gap and opportunity analysis that showed over a billion dollars in retail leakage to markets outside of our trade area, and the results of that study were presented to you this March of this year. Since that time, we've moved into the marketing phase of this process. The retail coach developed a retailer match list that included the top 30 targeted companies based on, basically matching their site selection criteria with our trade area demographics and with our leakage study results. That list has since been expanded. It started with the top 30, it's been expanded to include additional retailers, and it, it covers a wide variety of restaurants, clothing retailers, and general retailers. The consultants also created a developer match list. That is a list of over 60 retail developers that work in the Texas, in Texas. Each of the targeted retailers and developers receive marketing packets from the retail coach, and they continue to reach out to everyone on these lists on a monthly basis to, to continue to get our name out there and to determine interest on the part of those, those retailers and developers. The retail coach also created a retail portal website where retailers and developers can be directed to, to gain access to the reports and maps and graphs that came out of our market study. Also, within the last couple of weeks, Jared has been working on a new economic development website, or page on the city's website, where we'll have links to that retail portal and links to other economic development resources, and we hope to have that page ready to launch here within the next couple of days. This week, we also started working on a focused effort to reach out to the entertainment sector. The retail coach currently is running an entertainment report for our retail trade area and a list of 10 to 15 entertainment operators, which would include things like movie theaters, miniature golf, go-kart tracks, all various types of entertainment venues that we will prepare recruitment packages for and send out here within, probably within the next week. Hopefully, hopefully next week, we'll, we'll have that out. Each of those packets is customized for, for those specific vendors or operators or retailers, as they were in our original targeted list. Another effective way for making contacts in retail recruitment is through conferences that are organized by the International Council of Shopping Centers, or the ICSC. Jared and I attended the International Retail Conference in May, along with the retail coach staff, and had the opportunity to meet a number of, of retailers and developers. The consultants are also, are currently working with two of those developers on potential projects in Victoria, and they're talking to several restaurant, restaurant chains and one grocery chain on potential Victoria locations. There were a few retailers who were on our match list that have already been working on plans for Victoria locations. For example, the Papa Murphy's Pizza Outlet on Navarro and the Luby's proposed location. We can't claim credit, we can't credit our story for those. They were certainly in the pipeline and in process of planning stages to come here long before we even started our study, but, but we believe that our data in those kind of situations helps to validate those retailers' understanding of our, of our market. One thing to keep in mind as we continue moving forward in this effort, that retail recruitment is, is not a project, it's not an event, it's a process, and it takes time. It's, it's an ongoing process. Retailers that, that we're reaching out to have plans to, to build X number of stores in Texas over the next year or two years. They're not out there today looking for places to build a, a store three or four months from now. They have a long pipeline that's, that's in place. You know, we, what our job is to get in front of them, introduce the Victoria market to developers that may not be familiar with us, in hopes of getting on their list of locations that may be built a year or two, or even further out in the future. That's just how the process works. Last couple of things, in late October, I think it's October 24th, the, our 2015 demographic data updates will be available from the retail coach. That's when they will update all of our marketing materials and reports with that new data, which will be available to us when we go to the ICSC Texas Conference in Dallas this November. Since the Dallas conference is more of a regional conference, it's, it'll be attended primarily by developers and retailers who are doing projects in Texas markets, so we plan to have an exhibitors booth at that conference. And beyond that, beyond the November conference, our plan going forward is to continue working with the retail coach with an aggressive recruitment strategy into next year, working toward that international conference next May. So that's where we stand today. We just had a conference call with Aaron Farmer, our consultant, this morning, worked out some details on what we want to see in that entertainment sector, the research he's doing for us there, and got a few updates on a couple of other projects, but if you have questions, I'll do my best to, to answer them.
Very good. I would just ask the city manager, when y'all get that new webpage up, maybe send us a link in an email or something? It'd be nice to.
Hoping tomorrow, dear? Should be tomorrow.
I do have a question. That's still part of the cost, the original cost of the contract with them, right?
Yes. We'll, we'll need to enter into another contract with them in November, so, and that's one of the, we're asking, we'll be asking the sales tax board to pay for that, so.
It's a really important piece over the years, and if you, I think staff will agree, with respect to the health of our sales tax collections, that is such an important amount of money now, that we need to make sure we're cultivating it somewhat. So it's a small amount of reinvestment, in my opinion, to put back.
And I believe his contract is $35,000?
For the ongoing, yes, for the ongoing recruitment.
Which is much less, it's less expensive than hiring a full-time staff person to, to build those relationships and do all that data. We can't do it for that in-house, so.
It may be, and it will be sometime before we start seeing concrete results from this effort, but we're, we're, on, on an ongoing basis, we're, we're seeing contacts increase. We're getting calls from folks that, that are hearing what's going on, they're getting those packets from the retail coach, or they're hearing about us from fellow developers and retailers, so it's, especially here in the last couple of weeks, we've had kind of a spike in contacts, so it's, I think it's being affected.
John, on average, you're, you're probably taking, on average, at least a call a week from somebody.
Easily, easily.
And John's the point person on that, so he's, you know, he's the person that's handling those.
Several in the last week, yes.
Yes, you have.
On average, at least one a week.
It's been busy.
And these contacts, excuse me, these contacts are from the retail coach study?
Correct.
So you're keeping track of that, so you can give us a report?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna develop a better tracking system that, instead of just on a piece of paper.
Right. Well, we're actually working on a, an electronic system that'll gather a lot more information than just what I'm writing down in my notes right now, but no, we, we're keeping track of that. In addition to those that we're hearing from that didn't necessarily come out of that, that outreach effort. Some people would just show up here.
Yeah, so it would be interesting to compare the two, see which ones are coming in through the retail coach versus, you know, other means.
I think, once we have a little more time under our belt, we can have a better idea of, of where they're coming from, because a lot of those are probably just second-hand. You know, it's, it may, the initial reason may be from the same study, the same information getting out there, but it's not coming directly from the retail coach.
No, but the advantage, though, is, for example, you know, with Victoria being, you know, people are looking at Victoria for various reasons, and so sometimes a call may go into Dell or Adrian at BEDC, and they're going to refer them to us. Well, once they refer them to us, then we can give them the data that the retail coach has provided. So that's, becomes part of that sales effort that we do with that person, wanting to know what's going on in Victoria and what, you know, what's available, so it's very helpful.
Anything else?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Jared's just going to do a development activity, just drive up and down the road, right, Jared?
Yes, ma'am. You can see it out there. This is just a quick update. City manager asked me to give you, see the similar formatting that you saw back in March when I gave you that update, so. Well, I think we, you saw this last time. This is slightly updated from back in March. The Census Bureau in July released some new estimates for, these are actually, I believe, July 2013 estimates, showing the county at just over 90,000. Finally got over that threshold, and putting the city at around, almost 65,000. Again, if we extrapolate that out to get us to where we are today, 12 months later, it would put Victoria, City of Victoria somewhere around 66,000. This is the heart of the report. This is a look at the building permit activity. This is by calendar year, so this is the last little over two and a half years worth of data. The 2014 calendar year is through July. So you can see we've done 100 houses, single-family houses, over 750 apartment units. All of those apartment units that we showed you back in March that were in plan review or, or some sort of design stage have all been permitted and are under active construction at this point. And you see, we're, for the calendar year 2014, we're at 112 million, and, and so this will certainly be a year that we surpass and possibly create a record amount of construction for the calendar year. Obviously, there's 115 million in 2013, and we're already at 112 at the end of July. So we'll see where we get to by the end of December, but everything is looking, looking good. We're continuing to see the commercial activity holding steady compared to the last two years, and certainly hope that with all of our retail recruitment, we'll really see that increase over the next year. Shows you the similar slide in March, continuing to see the activity spread out all over Victoria, continuing to see interest along Houston Highway with the, that second Walmart location. As you, as you probably know, that Dollar Tree Center is, is completed and up and running with two, two or three tenants, I guess there's three tenants in it now, with another one looking at going in there. We've taken several phone calls recently. I believe we're going to see that fuel center located at the Walmart here fairly soon. And just a whole lot of interest. located at the Walmart here fairly soon, um, and it's just a, a whole lot of interest, um, in that corridor, uh, as we expected with that second Walmart. Um, of course, if you'll just drive up and down John Stockbury, you'll continually be amazed at the, uh, incredible amount, amount of activity that's going up and down that entire corridor.
Well, Ben Galvain's office complex is...
Yes, the, uh, that office complex for Civil Corps there at, uh, at Airline, all the steel is up, you can see all three floors of that, they're putting the walls and framing up, uh, really dramatic at that intersection in particular. Uh, the, uh, the assisted living center there on the opposite corner is, you know, really taking shape, and, uh, framing has begun on the Latigo apartment complex on the other, uh, intersection there, so, um, just, and phenomenal of activity concentrated, uh, in that area, and of course, if you, as you drive further up Stockbauer towards the Victoria Mall, you'll see, uh, framing going up on the other apartment complexes, and, uh, we expect that, uh, the Colony Apartment Complex to be the next one completed, I would think within the next, uh, few weeks, those, those first few units will come online, uh, with the rest of them following later this fall, so, um, Lerue already shows you all the hotel activity, this is, again, just a snapshot of all of the activity we've seen over the last, uh, three years or so. We, we have already finalized the Marriott Courtyard, there, they have their certificate of occupancy, uh, the last one left is the La Quinta out there on South Laurent, and, uh, they are well underway with framing on that structure as well. Apartment activity, we talked a little bit about that, as I said, all of the projects that were planned or talked about are all under construction, uh, we should see those last three, the Duke, Oak Forest and Ascension, uh, having some units come online this winter, with the rest of them later this spring, spring 2015, so... Again, just a map showing you where all those apartment locations are at. Single-family activity, we're seeing a little bit of an uptick in this activity, which is welcome, we did twenty, we permitted twenty-three houses alone in the month of July, so that would be a nice trend to see continue on, uh, this, these are, circles represent kind of the, the general locations where we're seeing the bulk of that activity, obviously, as in years past, that area between US-87 and US-77, Main Street in Navarro, uh, we have four subdivisions under, under, with that construction activity happening, uh, that's where we're seeing the bulk of it. Um, Fox Creek is, uh, our newest subdivision that was recently completed on Ben Jordan, uh, they have, I believe, six or seven houses at my last count, uh, under construction out there, believe those would hopefully fall in that hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-thousand-dollar, uh, range, so, um, and then the latest, Salem Crossing, planning commission approved their preliminary plat in July, that's the one out there at Salem Road, um, just east of the Home Depot site, and their final plat for Phase One came in on Monday, so we were well on our way to seeing that, um, development take place. And, uh, be happy to answer any questions, that's it in a nutshell, there's, as John said, we're, we continually get calls, uh, I get two or three ren calls a week from different developers or whatever, just, I had one today that came in and spent an hour with me, just going over all of the development activity that's happening in Victoria, so...
Very good. The only thing, you know, I find interesting, and there's no question, is that, how many people ask me about specifics about things going on, and I have to remind them, we really aren't, doesn't come to us if there's no, you know, variances or issues, you know? There was a question the other day about how many new businesses, well, we don't necessarily know that, you know, and we don't need to know, we don't need to know all those details, so, there is a lot going on, and I was amazed, I was out at the John Stockbauer Airline Intersection, I think yesterday, that is interesting, if y'all have time, go by there, it's a big change, so... Okay, what else, anything?
That's it.
Okay, then no executive session, and that concludes our agenda, words earned. Thank you.
Thank you.